Good day, everyone. This is the township of Franklin on July 18th. If everyone please rise for the flag salute.
We signify the flag of the United States of America and to a republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go to the public open meeting statement, please.
This meeting was called the order by the secretary. Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act in the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website, a notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel, and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building.
Okay, move call please.
Mr. Malady.
Here.
Mr. Sweet.
Here.
Mayor Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Treglune.
Here.
And Chairman Patch.
Here.
We have a forum. Let's go to Resolution PV 2305, Thomas Rosa. Is there a motion to accept, approve that resolution?
Motion to accept PV 23-5.
Moving second, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet. Mr. Mayor Bruno. Mr. Treglune.
Yes.
Chairman Patch.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to presentations, the first on the agenda tonight is PV 22-6 Sullivan. It's councillor. Scavelli comes up.
Too far away.
Good evening. I'm here to request an extension of the approval that you just referenced for the reason that we applied to the Pine Lands shortly after we received our approval in September of 2022. And through various, for reasons of like, let's say, the Pine Lands may be losing the application, I didn't get, we didn't get our first review letter until April of 2023, and that basically took up our whole 190 days. So now we are actively involved, and I believe we've made our last submission to the Pine Lands, which will enable them to give us a certificate of filing. So I'm requesting the six-month extension for getting the subdivision deeds perfected by filing.
I have a motion, and a second, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Sweet.
Yes.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Treglune.
Yes.
Chairman Patch.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the next six months to deal with the Pine Lands.
Thank you.
All right, I got you, Kevin. Okay, let the record show that Kevin Costas team has joined us at this time, and he'll be participating in this evening's meeting. All right, let's move on to the public hearing on the Affordable Housing Plan. Councillor Madden, who is representing us this evening in place of Mr. Porelli, who has a conflict, and afterwards we'll have comments on new ordinance. So, Ms. Madden, you want to start us off here with, what are we doing?
Sure, sure. Our tasks tonight are the review and potential adoption of the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which are aspects of the master plan, together with that, and that is within the board's jurisdiction, I'm sorry. Is that on?
Please, you're good.
And the adoption of that element of the master plan is within the board's jurisdiction. That's not something that goes to the governing body for adoption, that's something the board itself adopts. Together with your consideration of that proposed plan, we're also considering four separate zoning ordinance amendments, which are part of that housing element in Fair Share Plan and intended to effectuate that plan. Your tasks in that regard are to review those ordinance amendments for consistency with your borough master plan, which is of course being amended by this Housing Element Fair Share Plan, and to make recommendations to the governing body with respect to whether you endorse those ordinance as drafted, or whether you have any recommendations concerning those ordinance amendments. And governing body is free to ignore your recommendations, provided they adopted those ordinance amendments by a full majority and explain the rationale for doing so when they do that. The final piece of the public tonight is your recommendations regarding this affordable housing overlay map. Whenever the official map of municipalities is being altered, that's required to be referred to the plan for, again, for your recommendations to the governing body as far as whether this map is consistent with zoning as laid out in this Housing Element Fair Share Plan and these ordinance amendments. So they all kind of go hand in hand. Your jurisdiction as far as adoption is limited to the adoption of this Housing Element Fair Share Plan, and in the other aspects, you're acting in a divisive capacity.
Okay. Well, let's start with, is there any questions from the board? Are you Chris next? Chris, you can.
Yeah, I'm going to briefly go over what this is, and I'll take, I mean, this is a 375, close to 400-page document here, although just my presentation tonight should be about five to 10 minutes, because really, within this document, there is.
Let me swear, you're just.
Oh, technically, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Thanks very much.
All right, so of this Housing Element Fair Share Plan, it's a 38-page housing plan, and then about 300 or so pages of appendices that are just documents in support of that housing plan, and is all required by law and in accordance with a settlement agreement between the Township and Fair Share Housing Center, which is the statewide sort of advocacy organization for affordable housing for low and moderate income households. But as of, I believe, 2015, and what's courtly known as Mountmorel for kind of granted party status to every single lawsuit for affordable housing throughout the state. And since there is no actual Council on Affordable Housing, a state agency that moderates these housing plans, they have become the de facto arbiter, I guess you would say, in terms of you deal with the court to get a housing plan, or the compliance, and you deal with them in terms of they agree that you cannot get sued as long as you settle with them, and then you put all the documents into place to comply with that settlement. So let me back up just a little bit here, about what affordable housing is. So forty-some-odd years ago, in Mountmorel, there was a proposal for an affordable housing development for some people who happened to live in the town that were getting priced out by new development. They used to be farm workers, and the farms are getting developed with what you see now as the middle or some housing communities that are in there. A nonprofit organization wanted to build housing specific for them to stay. The town rezoned, or wouldn't allow, in variance essentially, to allow multifamily housing for them in the town. So NWCCP sued, saying, you're discriminating, you're using your powers of zones, you keep out people of low income in the community. That took about a decade to go through the courts, which you get the Mountmorel I case, which was municipalities can't use their powers of zone, which is within your jurisdiction, and you get to decide what land uses get nowhere. You can't use that police powers of zone to effectively say that poor people aren't allowed to live in your community, or low and moderate income is the term that's used now. A decade later, after the court said you can't do that, most towns were not compliant with adopting any zoning ordinances to allow a fair share of multifamily housing, which is what you would generally consider low and moderate income housing. So the courts in Mountmorel II, after the NWCCP of Southern Burlington County, sued Mountmorel again, then said, okay, since you're not complying by simply allowing the zoning ordinances to allow a fair share of multifamily housing, or on the fact how it could be typically affordable to low and moderate income households, we're going to create this Council on Affordable Housing, and then later on, the Fair Housing Act was passed, and now we get these actual numbers of, instead of saying you have to zone to allow multifamily housing, you have a number, an obligation of 500 units, or 1,000 units, or 2,000 units in some cases, but you have to provide that number of units of affordable housing. Really, a realistic opportunity for the production of that number of units of affordable housing. And through 25 or so more years of litigation over this, we have arrived at, after the disbanding of COA, which used to be an organization of the state that determined what your numbers were and determined whether or not you were satisfying those numbers, in order to be compliant with the Fair Housing Act, you have to go through the court to certify that you are compliant with your state-mandated requirement to provide a fair share or a realistic opportunity for a fair share of your affordable housing. In order to determine what your number is and what your fair share is, that's what the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center is, and that was approved by the courts, I think, maybe a year ago, close to that. And that agreement came through this board, it was adopted by the council, the committee, and it was reviewed, I want to say, fall of last year by this board, for all the terms of what your numbers are in this affordable housing overlay, those were in the settlement agreement. There's nothing new in this plan that wasn't already stated within the settlement agreement. This is just the plan being put in place to satisfy the terms of the settlement agreement, and in order for the committee to adopt the new zoning ordinance and this affordable housing overlay, it has to be consistent with the master plan, and this housing plan is an element of your master plan. So this is laying the ground, with the legal groundwork, so that the affordable housing overlay can be put into place, so that you satisfy your affordable housing obligations, which then, since you have a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center that has been approved by, I believe, Superior Court of Gloucester County that reviews these, if you go through with these steps, then you are immune from any builder's remedy lawsuits, which means a developer cannot come in and sue the town, saying, you're not compliant with your affordable housing regulations, you have to let me build whatever I want, wherever I want. You would be immune from that sort of lawsuit.
Chris, do you know how?
Until 2025, at least. That is, this current round of affordable housing, and we're in technically the third round now, is 1999 through 2025. The numbers I'm going to go over in just a minute of what your obligations are, is for the third round as well as prior rounds. And there are some homes out there that the town's already gotten credit for in terms of affordable housing that count for, even though they're not deed-restricted, affordable units, that go through a lottery process, they count as low and moderate income housing in the fact that they are occupied by people of low and moderate income, and they've been that way for a long enough period of time that they are considered credit-worthy as affordable housing. So that's sort of the groundwork of what this is and why we're doing this, is really it's this state-mandated process, that you have to provide a certain amount of affordable housing. And what the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center determined is that Franklin Township has a rehabilitation lead of 52 homes, a prior round obligation of 166 homes, and a third round obligation of 527 homes. What that is, the rehabilitation obligation, the existing homes in the township, either the town or the county has to spend funds to bring them to be co-compliant if they are occupied by a lower moderate income household, and say they need a new roof, or need new windows, or something like that. And that obligation has already been satisfied because Gloucester County's Home Improvement Program, which is funded through a community development block grant from the federal government, they have already rehabilitated 96 homes in Franklin Township in the last 15 years or so. And of those 96 homes that have been rehabilitated, about 59 of them qualify as affordable housing credits to the town. So your rehabilitation obligation of 52 units has already been satisfied. That is already done with. You are good until at least 2025, in that regard, for one of the three components of affordable housing. Prior round and third round are really the same thing, that's the essentially new construction of affordable housing, homes that are deed-restricted and have to be income-restricted for at least 30 years, so that only a lower moderate income household can occupy that housing. Prior round obligation, I said, of 166 units, 527 for the third round, so you get a cumulative obligation of, what is that? 693. Yeah, 693. So essentially, what the settlement agreement is, is that Franklin's obligation is to see to it that there's a realistic opportunity for the production of 693 units of affordable housing. And I want to stress, that is realistic opportunity construct, that the township is not under an obligation that they have to go out and fund and physically build this housing themselves, it'll all be up to a private developer or a nonprofit organization if they want to come in and build that. The township's obligation is to not stand in the way if a developer wants to build something that satisfies everything in this ordinance. Okay? I guess the proceedings aren't satisfied. And I'll get to, essentially, like I said, there's only this 38-page housing plan and several hundred pages of appendices, and all this is really about three or four pages of real substance in here. And that is on page 33 of the housing plan, this is the compliance mechanism, this is how you, the township committee has agreed with Fair Share Housing Center, through about a two- or three-year negotiation process with them, this is not something that just came about overnight of, you know, someone at the township committee, or the township administrator, or myself, saying, this is what we're going to do, and then everybody signed off. This was years of negotiation, the back and forth with Fair Share Housing Center and the court-appointed special master from our cadence over, this is how we're going to address this obligation, this is how we're going to make it realistic, so that housing can be built in Franklin Township, that would include an affordable component. And since the township is not going to be paying for any of this, the way, the mechanism really that affordable housing gets produced is by requiring that when a private developer or a nonprofit wants to build, you know, new market-rate housing, that a certain percentage of that, typically 15% to 20%, is required to be set aside as the affordable units. So the primary compliance mechanism here is we've created an affordable housing overlay zone, which is not really one zone, but it is, it's about 20 properties, give or take a few in the southern, central end of the town, closer to Newfield, and then a half-dozen properties in the north end of town off of Fry's Mill Road, that would be subject to an overlay zone. So what that means is the regular zoning, the property rights that any property owner in that area has, does not change. No one's being kicked off their land so that housing can come in and be built. And new set of development rights, that on these particular properties, what would be permitted, in addition to what's already permitted there, would be multifamily housing or townhouses at a greater density than is currently permitted, so that there's, at least in the court's opinion, a sufficient amount of development potential that a developer might want to actually come in and build something and spend the money that it takes to build a bigger project, where they could get a certain number of homes there, to where you would get a 20% satisfied, that would come close to satisfying your obligation. So in addition to that, you could also add, as I said, some prior cycle credits, which was, it's a weird provision in the law, that any home built between 1980 and 1986, which was essentially a second round of affordable housing, was built in that time and sold for what would be an affordable level, and has maintained a value that would be considered affordable for a lower moderate income household, even though it's not a deed-restricted affordable home, but has to be occupied by somebody of lower moderate income, you get credit for that. And the court master, I'll give them credit here, even though they're very tough to work with, they did the work on this to show that the, I don't know, there's several hundred buildings in Franklin that were built between 1980 and 1986, and according to their analysis, 36 of those come for credit. So of that 690-something obligation, they gave us credit for 36 existing homes in town. And then the remainder of that obligation is all being satisfied through this affordable housing overlay district, as well as a township-wide ordinance, which is in one of the ordinances that we're going to look at in just a minute. But any new housing development of five homes or more is going to be required to set aside at least 20% of their, those homes as affordable units. Between those, the court has agreed that that would satisfy your 690 unit obligation. That's really what this is. The rest of the plan, not to say, please don't read it, there's nothing to see here, but it's largely things that are kind of irrelevant, because it's things that are required by law, since there's about 20 pages in there on discussion of census statistics. That's because prior to this being settled by the courts, your housing plan would go to COA and say, census says we have this population, we're growing this, we have this much land, this is the income of people here, and that's how you determine the obligation numbers are. Now, since it's being settled in court, there were reports produced by three different organizations, and then Fair Share had their particular report, and they liked those, produced by their attorneys, which I think their original projected three-year obligation was within 2,000 units or so. Through the negotiations with Fair Share, we're able to settle with that number of approximately 690. But the law still says you have to have those things in the housing plan, so that's why there's the 20 pages of discussion of the types of industry that are the residents of Franklin are employed in, that's largely immaterial to the plan, but that has to be in there by law. And then the appendices are just all the supporting documents of drafts of manuals of how you're going to affirmatively market the affordable units if and when they come, copy, initial drafts of these ordinances, which we're going to talk about, and a few other supporting documents for all this, but the real, it's documentation on the existing units, maps of the overlay zones, all the ordinances, affordability assistance program manual draft, because as part of your affordable housing obligation, you have to have Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which you do, and, you know, doesn't necessarily have a report on it, but the township, whenever there's a non-residential development, the township collects a fee from that developer, it's 2.5% of the equalized assessed value, that goes into an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that money is then required to be spent on affordable housing, and you have to have a plan in place for how you're going to spend that money, so we have a draft of that plan in here. That's going to change a little bit before it gets adopted by the committee, I actually had a conference call this morning with the court master at Fair Share, which was some good news on this, we projected that to spend money immediately, but more or less that we could wait a couple of years to spend the trust fund money on actual affordable housing, so I'll see how some time we're going to shake out. Yeah, and that's really all this is, outside of going through and reading some of the things on the basements there are material, I'd rather leave it to, if you guys have any questions, or I'm sure there's some people out here that have some questions tonight, it'd be easiest for me to just address those questions as they come, rather than trying to get further into the weeds on this if you're not sure. But I don't know what you may or may not be concerned about here, so I don't want to take another 30 minutes going through some minor detail that you're not concerned about.
Well, let's go forward first. Does anybody have any question?
Chris, you started that like this is one of the affordable housing overlay zones with a lot of lots, who you catch to apply to.
That was essentially what the negotiation with Fair Share Housing Center and the court master was, was there was, I was only involved in a little bit of those, picking of those exact lots, but there was identifying certain areas, and in order for the court to sign off on how to identify those areas, there's a couple of criteria they're looking for. The state law requires that in order for an affordable housing, a site designated for affordable housing to be feasible, it has to be approvable, meaning that the zoning has to be in place to allow it to happen, which is part of what this is and what the affordable housing overlay zone is for. It has to be developable in the sense that it's free of environmental constraints, because they're, to backtrack a little bit, after the first round of affordable housing back in the 80s, and then through the second round in the early 90s, a lot of towns said, okay, the courts say we have to zone for affordable housing, we're going to pick the wetlands next to the town dump, and we're going to zone that as affordable housing zone. And after a couple of years, the courts and other organizations, in particular builders, they wised up to that and argued in court that, hey, every town is zoning for affordable housing, a place that's absolutely impossible to develop, so they're not really satisfying their obligation. So in particular, since Fair Share Housing Center has been doing these negotiations essentially with about 450 of the 560 towns in New Jersey, their attorneys have wised up to what is and what is not a developing site. So a few things they're looking for, it has to be free of environmental encumbrances, it has to have access to transportation, meaning pretty close to a state highway or a county route, to where people can actually get on the road and get to where centers of employment are. And the other important thing in terms of Franklin, right now you have no sewer in town. So they require that these areas be located in a few places in town that are, on the state development redevelopment plan, they have five different districts essentially, there's Planning Area 1 through 5, and Planning Area 1 is the urban centers, that's Camden, Trenton, Newark, Atlantic City. Planning Area 2 is the suburban areas, about half of the rest of the county is in Planning Area 2. 3, 4, and 5 are the rural areas and the environmentally sensitive areas. DEP does not allow sewer extensions into anywhere that is Planning Area 3, 4, and 5. So part of what makes these particular properties suitable in terms of the Fair Share Agreement that those would be okay, is that they are in Planning Area 2, meaning they're the suburban planning area, meaning if somebody wanted to extend a sewer line to these properties, DEP would allow that. So we couldn't pick properties that were outside of the sewer service area, and even though there's no sewer right now, there is on the maps at the county level and at the state level, there are areas where a sewer could be extended and DEP would allow it. So they had to be within that particular area, and they had to be close to transportation, which is largely Fry's Mill, Nelsie Drive, Farnin Highway, those areas. And then they had to be relatively larger parcels, so that it would be attractive to a developer, you're not going to, they wouldn't have accepted if we gave them 100 parcels that are all scattered, they were each a hat big enough. They had to be big enough that a developer can look at it and say, yes, I could actually do something here. If they want to pay for sewer to come out and water to come out, but there's enough incentive that they feel it would be feasible and it could be done. And that's, so there was about, I want to say, five or six rounds of back and forth of, we, as the township, said, well, what about these properties? And they would say, okay, on this one, this one, this one, but not on that one, and then they would come back and they'd have their own maps and say, well, how about this property? And through the course of about two years or so, they settled on this map.
Chris, and so the ability to just make a change, because if this is settled in the date, this needs, we have to, yeah?
This is what has been agreed to at the court level, but it's still required upon you adopting this plan, and then the committee adopting this ordinance. So it can be changed, but if you want to change it, it would mean going back to the court and saying, we want to do a different zone, and having Fair Share Housing Center and the court master analyze that and approve that. So I don't want to say it's not possible, if nothing has formally been done yet, but that could be a six-month to a year-long process.
Chris, in layman's terms, if I understand the responsibility of the planning board, or our job, our perspective is that the courts have presented these lots here, and from a planning standpoint, wait a minute, we're developing a shopping center there, there's a shopping center that's being developed there, or there's, the township intends to put a park there, that would be the planning board's involvement here to red flag these lots, not so much where the lots were, because I understand the lots are already predetermined in the courts, and it'd be a long process to change it. From our perspective, we're looking for red flags on the lots that the courts have already adopted.
I mean, certainly that's not outside of your jurisdiction, but right now, I'll put it this way, all the underlying zoning would remain in place on these lots. So if, say, I'm just randomly picking one out here on the map in front of me, Block 2001, Lot 11, which is just a little bit south of Grand Avenue on Fry's Mill Road, pretty close to the, I'm forgetting the name of the buyers we just had the application here, the last one, just south of that. So they still have all the same rights they currently do. If they wanted to develop under, I think that's the Silverlight Industrial Building, if they wanted to develop under that, they would still be allowed to. You wouldn't be telling them, hey, no, you can't build there, because that's an affordable housing zone now. But this is, it's new property rights on top of what they already have, so if they say, oh, actually, no, now I want to build some housing, I want to pay for sewer to come down from Clayton, I'm going to build property that size, maybe they could get 20 or 30 units, and then, you know, six of them would be affordable.
And I think we're saying the same thing, is that we would red flag, oh, wait a minute, there's conversations about developing it here. Courts, you know, they're not going to be able to, you know, there's a potential that that property being developed, why don't you look for another lot, type of thing, in order to get the numbers, that's durable.
Frankly, no, you don't have to do that. This is, the courts have agreed, and the court master at Fair Share have agreed, that if you place this affordable housing zone on these properties, that will satisfy your obligation. Now, if, because there is going to be another round of affordable housing in 2025, or every town in New Jersey gets a new set of numbers, I'm not sure if there's going to be, they're all going to have to go through the courts again and negotiate with the Fair Share Housing Center, or if it's going to be that there is some state agency, whether that is a revival of COA, or if just DCA is going to be tasked with this. My personal hope is that there's going to be a more streamlined process, and it's not 20 years of litigation to determine these numbers, but it's more six months to a year of state-level negotiations, and then there's an actual state agency you negotiate with if you feel your number is inaccurate. But in just two years, we do a new round of numbers, and they'll look at what progress you've made on your affordable housing, and if, for whatever reason, half of these properties in this overlay zone have been developed with something else, then the courts might say, okay, well, we had given you credit for essentially 1,000 units through this overlay, so that's if, if all this was built to max capacity, it could get you 1,000 units of affordable housing. They might say, well, we're going to take out the ones that have already been developed with something else, because that's not going to be affordable housing now, and then say you get 500 credits.
I think that's what we're trying to say.
In two years, they will review.
That balancing act, whether we identify it now or in a couple of years, we'll review it. You want to touch on your ordinances?
Sure, I'll briefly go over them. So ordinance 1323 is a new affordable housing ordinance, which essentially codifies into township law what is already in the Fair Housing Act adopted by the state. township law, what is already in the Fair Housing Act adopted by the state and the U Act, which is the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls. And this basically just says what has to happen for all affordable housing units and what's required. It gets into the specifics of if you're building 20 units of affordable housing, 10 of them have to be for low income versus moderate income households, and a certain amount have to be three bedrooms, or a certain amount can be one bedroom. But the affordable units, if you're building an apartment complex, the affordable units can't be somewhere else, they're supposed to be generally integrated into the site so that they're not sticking out as these are, this is the poor house, and this is the rich house, kind of thing, as well. Really, I'm not entirely sure why every town has to have this in their ordinance, because this is essentially state law anyway. But just like the electric vehicle ordinances, to some degree, last year, a lot of towns had to then adopt them into their own code. So, but this is what's required, it's just taking state law and putting it into your own township code. This ordinance, this code is no different than what every other town in New Jersey has on the books, if they haven't been going through this process, which I've said is about 450 out of the 560 towns in New Jersey.
What's the total number of lots that are there?
Oh, number of lots?
About.
For the overlay zone?
I'm just asking, I have that same question.
About 30.
I'm still fighting.
Assuming I can count, it's 30.
It's crazy that this is only good for another year and a half.
It's not completely start from scratch in two years, because once your plan is certified, the credits count, but it will be reviewed in two years to see what progress has been made, and it'll be, I guess, open to challenge in two years. But since the courts have already certified this, assuming everything is still in similar conditions two years from now, I don't honestly expect that within two years, based on what I've seen in this town in the last five years, that all 30 of these lots are going to quickly be developed with large scale developments that would take up the entirety of the property. So, of each round of affordable housing, once you've had a plan certified and affordable credits certified by the court, that typically then in the next round, they get rolled into that. So there's going to be a new obligation, but you've already satisfied your previous obligation. However, there will be a review, and then say, maybe 10 years after that, if nothing has happened, then there's always a midpoint in the next round where developers get to challenge your, the status of your affordable housing. So there's always periodic review periods when a developer can come in and say, okay, you've got a plan that was certified 10 years ago to meet your affordable housing obligation, but nothing has happened since then, you're not really satisfying your obligation, or is there a reason nothing has happened? Are you doing, are you taking any action to stop this from happening? And that's, the guy, what the heart of what this is and what the original Mount Laurel cases were about, I really have to stress, the township itself is really not obligated to do anything other than to put in place the mechanisms and the laws so that if a developer wants to build affordable housing, you're not stopping them from doing that. And what the affordable housing overlay zone does is it creates, through the zoning, enough density that's allowed in, just in these particular areas, that it might make it attractive, that it's financially feasible for a developer to do so. And another part of this settlement agreement, not tied to the overlay zone, is that if a developer anywhere in town has the pockets deep enough that they want to build and extend sewer, you have agreed that you will not try and stop them from doing that. Now, if they're not in this overlay zone, you don't have to give them development at the density that is allowed at the overlay zone, which is a maximum of 14 units an acre. If they wanted to build somewhere in the RA zone in the middle of town, that right now the max density, I think, is about two units an acre if you use a cluster provision, you don't have to give them 14 units an acre, but you would be obligated to at least work with them on something. But this is putting in place so that you're not standing in the way of development that would otherwise get you to compliance, but the township is under no obligation, I have to stress that. But if in two years, you haven't seen 690 something units of affordable housing built, you do not have to build or pay for or contribute to a developer building those. No financial obligation for the township for this.
Chris, I have a question, Chris. Out of the three overlay maps, how many potential units could be put in the sewer? Was that studied?
Yes, that is, it's all on page 34 of the plan, the chart there gives you absolute maximum capacity, as in if every one of those properties were built at 14 units an acre, you could get a total of 1,006 affordable units with 5,000 total housing units. That's if every single one of those properties was built to its maximum capacity.
So it gives developers a chance to turn back the areas?
Yeah, they can, I mean, these are all still, I believe they're all still privately owned, I don't think the township owns any of these lots. So a developer would have to negotiate with these property owners to get, you know, buy the property or get an option to purchase. Whether or not this increases their property value and making it more attractive, I'm not sure, it may or may not. But yes, the whole point of this was that the only thing the courts would agree on, or I should say, Fair Share Housing Center and the court master would advise the court to accept, is that, one, these are properties that are in the area that would potentially be attractive to a developer, and the ordinance would be of a sufficient density to potentially make it attractive for a developer to want to come in and do something.
All these properties are privately owned, so the developer would have to go to the owner and make a deal?
Yes.
Does the word eminent domain come into here? Can you enforce property owners' self?
The only way you can do eminent domain, well, like the county and the state can do eminent domain of frontage if they want to widen the highway, or you have to go through the redevelopment process and designate these in need of redevelopment. But that's not available right now. So no eminent domain.
Ordinance 14-23, that ordinance identifies the lots?
Yes, ordinance 14-23 is the overlay zone. It is identifying these 30 lots and saying that this will be an overlay zone, and provides standards of the maximum density of 14 units an acre, 20% set aside if you build with that capacity, and then provides some other general standards of, the minimum lot area, if you want to do this, you have to have at least five acres. And then provides some additional bulk standards for affordable housing development. That's a simple rezoning ordinance.
1523 is the development fee ordinance?
1523 is the development fee ordinance, which I'd have to double check, but this is 99% the exact same text that is currently in your code. The court master likes to see these updated with, she likes to tweak about one to two sentences in the entirety of these seven or eight page ordinances, just to make you adopt a new one. But this is, as I said, this is already on your books, and you've already been collecting this at least for the past several years. It requires that for all non-residential development, at the time that they're seeking a CEO, they have to pay a fee of 2.5% of their equalized assessed value, and that goes to the affordable housing trust fund. This is a slight amendment to what is already on your books.
And the layer four, 1623, is a mention, I think, the master?
The last one is just amending your development checklist so that there's an affordable housing requirement noted at the checklist item. And that's, that's that. Like Matt said, your task tonight is hopefully to adopt the housing plan, and you at the planning board, that's your sole authority to do so. Presumably it would be adopted by you tonight, and then it does actually go to the governing body, if they don't adopt it, the court's like to see them endorse it just as they show up support, so that it's clear to the courts that the governing body and the planning board are on the same page, so it's not, sometimes it will happen that the planning board will adopt the master plan, and, but then the governing body does not endorse, doesn't want any part of that. The planning board says, hey, we want to make all these changes, and the governing body says, no, we don't. And you get the disconnect between what's in your plan and what's in your code. So, to help avoid that situation, the courts have asked, and the court master likes to see that the governing body also endorses the plan, basically saying, the committee officially says, yes, we agree with this, and we're going to move forward to enact everything that's supposed to enact in the plan.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions?
We have a question. So there's over 500 municipalities in the state of New Jersey, and well over four hundred under the doubt they have a COA plan. I understand that when we went to court last year, we voted for two municipalities. That didn't fly?
Uh, that doesn't sound accurate to me. There's still, basically, there was a big sort of pause in affordable housing from around 2010, give or take, until 2015, because there was, and this third round of affordable housing got particularly confusing, because I want to say it was 2008, somewhere there about, sometime before I'd even finished planning school. COA at the time had put forward what they called their third round rules, and that's how they determine what each town's fair share number is. The first two rounds were literally, your population is this relative to the amount of lower and moderate income households in the region, which is a lower moderate income household than anyone who has 80% or less of the area median income. So by that metric, 80% or less of the area median, median being 50%, 80%, 40%, they would look at, how many people in your area have, essentially make 80% of the area median income or less, which is roughly 40% of the population. And they'd say, how many of them are in this area? What's your current population? How much land do you have? And then they'd give you a number to say, this is what your obligation is to satisfy your regional fair share. The third round, they decided to make it a little more complicated, and they determined, or they developed what they called the growth share methodology, which was not based on necessarily how much land you have, but whether or not you're projected to grow. And the logic behind that was, your obligation wasn't necessarily based on, well, you've got thousands of acres of land, but you're in the middle of nowhere. It was, are you going to have a lot of jobs coming to your town that would require people of lower income to have a place to live near where they would be working? So there's, which makes some sense, but it was very hard to figure out those numbers. There's some pretty complex calculations that had to go into it, and it was all based on your own projections of your growth. And that also led to towns saying, well, we kind of like economic growth, but if it's going to then require we have to do all the affordable housing stuff, we're just going to zone out all of our commercial stuff, and we're not going to, we're just going to say we're not going to grow. And so then, another decade of litigation between municipalities and the state went on, and in 20, I think it was 2013, the growth share methodology was invalidated by the courts. Court said, nope, COA, you've got to go back to the drawing board and use what's actually in the Fair Housing Act to determine these numbers. And then there was two more years of arguing over, okay, well, the third round started in 1999, it's now 2015, are these numbers going back to 1999 and covering the last 16 years, or are we starting now in 2015 and going to 2025? So that was two years of court battles, and eventually in 2015, a judge in Mercer County, I think it was, determined that, yes, you have to go back, cover what they call the gap period, it's 1999 to 2015, and your third round obligation is for the full 1999 to 2025. So it was really, it was about 15 years of arguing in courts over whether, how we're picking out these numbers that are each town's obligation, and we finally settled on that. And so since 2015, one by one, towns have been settling with Fair Share Housing Center. Some of it has been because some towns wanted to act really quickly and just get it done. Some towns were singled out by Fair Share Housing Center to really, you know, get on them to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. No surprise, Mount Laurel is always number one on their list, because that's where the court cases originated. And typically, fair share focused on the more suburban municipalities, but are the ones that were supposed to be targeted by the growth share methodology, because they had been growing a lot, but then ignoring their fair share affordable housing responsibilities. And they were approving, it's the places that were approving lots of very high income developments, but not getting affordable housing component, and then going to the court and saying, well, sorry, we're built out, we can't have any affordable housing change. Let all the rich people in, but we won't let any lower income people in. Those are the towns that Fair Share was looking at most closely, and that's got, look out their attention. But every town is a little bit different, but there's still quite a few towns that are still in the settlement process. Franklin is on the detail end of this, and most of the other towns that I've worked with at least have been in the last two or three years, have gone through their settlements. But I was told last week by our planning director that we just got contacted last week, who went down and wants to start this process. And they're going to be finishing this third round, if they actually hire us to do this, they're going to be finishing their third round negotiations at the exact time the fourth round is starting, which is going to take at least a year or something. And then there's, I don't know, somewhere in the range of 50 to 100 towns that decided to completely ignore this process at all. Generally, those are the towns, there's a few in Cumberland County, that not only do they have, they really have no development potential, they would be begging a developer to come out to build something they want some tax on. And then there's also, I should say, every town that is an urban aid community, there's a list of about 50 or 60, I think, that the DCA puts out every couple of years, that's your Newark, your Trenton, your Atlantic City. I think Glasser might be an urban aid community, Woodbury probably is in the county here. They are exempt from prospective need, but they have to settle a rehab obligation, so they don't, they don't really settle with Fair Share Housing Center the same way they don't.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Mr. Madden, you have any, the court ordinance to the public?
Just that the township's taking a proactive approach with respect to the adoption of this plan, and really the most crucial thing is the annuity from these builders' remedy lawsuits. Without a plan like this in place, and keep in mind, this is a state mandate, this is not a decision of whether or not we should do this. The state and the courts have determined, you have to do that. So without this in place, and be aware, builders are out there looking for these towns that don't have these plans in place, because if you're subject to a builder's remedy lawsuit, you lose all control over how properties would be developed. The court could establish their own zoning parameters for a particular property. The town would end up paying that developer's council fees, the town would end up paying for infrastructure to extend this sewer or roads or utilities to the property. A master would be appointed by the court to oversee all this, and that special master might be from Hoboken and have no familiarity with tribal township. And those are all very real risks that the township's taking a proactive approach to avoid it by the adoption of this plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, just someone in the town motion to open the public portion, no, second, move the second, our public portion on the affordable housing plan. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Petch. Harry Kennedy, 1578 Fry's Mill Road. I feel like I've won the lottery, although I've already sold, yeah.
Hey, remember your friends?
Yeah, I've already...
Are we swearing in the public?
Yeah. Harry Kennedy?
1517.
8 Fry's Mill Road. Which Madden are you?
Matthew Madden.
Matthew, are you Jim Son or Mike?
I am Jim Son.
Oh, very good. So you're Pat's brother?
Yes, sir. Do you swear the testimony? You'll give the, give me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Petch, you can start that timer over again now. Thank you. Very good.
And I will even give you the...
Why, that is so kind of you, Mr. Petch.
Because you need to do your introduction first.
Well, that's, that's no problem, that would take an hour and a half just to do the resume, right, Joe? As, as you're probably aware, my property sits in the overlay zone, although I'm now down to one acre. My neighbor's property, who I see here tonight, Josh Marcucci, and Ally Ortiz, who have moved in and are our new neighbors, they're also in that zone. Again, it was wonderful to hear, it was almost like I was in ancient Israel, and I was listening to give us parabas about how the poor township was being led down this lane by that nasty old court. Give me a break. Come on, guys, it was a negotiation, we all know that. And the negotiation involved both sides. And the negotiation, you have to be very close to Clayton, obviously, and you have to be very close to Vineland because of the sewage separation. Just some questions to ponder. 56 square miles, 500 and some acres per square mile, Ralph, I think, comes out to 35,000, 35,000 acres in Franklin Township. Whoa, how did that one acre make that out of 100 and out of 35,000? That was pretty good odds. You never know. It's good to have friends in high places, it truly is. But as I said, we have already sold the bulk of the farm, Kevin. And when I sold the farm, Joe, I was offered $35,000 more than I took. I was offered it by a phony LLC, with some good friends of mine locally involved in that LLC. I'm sure that would have been designated for the low cost housing area. It's fine, I have nothing against low cost housing, but we sold it to somebody that promised to build a farm on there and a single family dwelling. So hopefully my neighbors will not necessarily be subjected to many townhouses in the area. Of course, it's all speculative anyway, the chances of Clayton running a sewer line down that road to go to that spot are remote, just as the chances of Vineland running a sewer line down are probably remote. But we have to ask a couple of questions before we do that. Hmm, if they run that sewer line, will the intermediate properties that possibly could be redevelopment areas also... possibly could be redevelopment areas also tie into that sewage? Could the people that own that very large property that's talking about getting a solar field as well as possibly a warehouse, could they also tie into that sewage capability? Suddenly, the sewage capability for the low cost housing becomes possible because of the development area and the sewage numbers that might be available to those people. Now, again, I'm very lucky. The only person that was at that meeting, two people that were here, Mr. Petch and Mr. Constantine, were at that inf-, oh, Jake, I forgot you. You were at that meeting too, that infamous EDC meeting. Sewage was discussed that night and running it down was discussed. And again, the conflicts of interest of people that live in the nearby area and that also have developable land should be discussed as to whether or not they could tie into it. I don't think it's a practical concern. And Josh and Ally, I don't think anybody's going to be building any townhouses on that property in the near future. I don't think it's practical that that sewage will be extended from Clayton. I don't think it's practical that it'll be extended from Vineland. I know the township would never stand in its way, but it would be so interesting to see what other development areas it would open up by just running by those designated areas. And I know Mr. Borelli has a conflict. I think he owns property in that area, which is why he's not sitting in and why Mr. Madden, and again, the firm of Madden and Madden is the jack of all trades. They do everything. They do opers, they do firings, they do planning board for you. They're really a good firm to have. And I know the uncles and the fathers very well. I'm not that friendly with the younger generation. But again, nice to have them to pinch hit. One last thing I would be concerned about by everybody on this planning board. And I know that asking questions is a tough thing. So I'll frame it very simply so the attorney can understand it and everybody up there can understand it very clearly. I'll speak slowly. I would really like to see an audit of those COA funds that have already been contributed. I would like to see a very thorough analysis of who's put into that fund, how much of it's been contributed by each one of the contributions. And then I'm sure I can do an Oprah check as to who might or might not have contributed. Because there have been some questions from the employees that worked in that department. And I'm not going to rat them out. That's not nice. But surprisingly, people talk to me. And they're very concerned about who made contributions and who didn't make contributions. I would think an audit of that would be an excellent idea, Joe, in terms of clearing the planning board's way as well as the township committees as we move into a new era of collecting these funds with a new ordinance. Let's double check.
Why don't you take that message, the township?
Well, I'm going to take it here first. And you know, and with Jake here, I'm sure, Jake is a multifunctional person that can do many tasks. I will take it to the township committee personally as well. And again, the concerns were real. The employees shall remain unnamed, but I have been told on more than one occasion by more than one person that the selective nature of collections was very troubling to those employees. And those are very honest, competent people. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Petch. And thank you for your indulgence for the couple extra minutes. And it's great to see new neighbors out at the meeting. Take care and have a great night, everyone. Good to see you again.
And this is on the, this portion only, correct?
That's correct.
Dave Marshall, 67 New Road, Malaga.
67 what was it?
New Road.
Should I testify again this evening? I'll be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
When we started talking about this before, and it's been obviously postponed a couple times, there was a gentleman from one of the other boards that got up and spoke against a lot of us talking about low income housing. And that was addressed a little bit, but just to give a little perspective, I, most people don't know this, but for about two and a half years, I was low income. There were days I didn't have food. I lived with a sleeping bag and a weight bench in an apartment, low income apartment. We had a Mr. Softy truck that sold drugs. That was it. That apartment complex still stands. At this point, it is even worse than it was then. So I know what low income can and cannot do, and I know how bad it can be if it's not mitigated properly. And that's one of my concerns. Not this particular board, but in township in general, we have not been real good at mitigating a lot of things as things come into the town, as you've heard some of my complaints in the past. I hope that as we go forward, as this happens, that it gets a lot better because it's going to have to for the residents that live around there. Crime, unfortunately, and this is again, not to pick on that particular area, but crime goes up if it's not properly managed considerably in the surrounding areas, not so much the low income areas, but surrounding areas because they, low income people do not steal from themselves because there's no purpose in it. And there are statistics all about this. I can give you a lot of it. The most recent FBI census, before they became watered down and diluted and muddied from where they are today in 2018, shows that the national average of crimes per thousand residents is 13.72. Franklin Township at that point in time is 28.69. We're already above the national average without this being in our area. And our police do a great job. I'm not trying to take away from them, but it already shows we have an issue that is only going to get worse, unfortunately. There's not much that can be done about that except for the fact that the police are going to have to be diligent, going to put a lot more pressure on them, and we're going to have to keep it managed correctly. One of the concerns I have obviously is the biggest area on these overlays is right next to my house. I mean, it's where the largest area of all the overlays are. And I know it's got to be near Vineland, but it just seems, again, we talked about this, Malaga gets a lot of the brunt end of this. I mean, it gets pushed a lot. Doesn't matter whether it's warehouses or low income, we get the largest area. And I know it's got to be near sewer, but there's still other areas that could have been expanded upon in other, other places. And from what I understand, that still can be decided if, if need be. It doesn't have to be these zones, from what I understood the night. My question with the water and sewer though, there was a section that, you did a good job going over everything. I appreciate that. But there was a, a whole section in there on water and sewer. And I'm going to read it, what it states, just to make sure I'm not stating it wrong. It says, "Consistent with settlement agreement with a fair share housing center, the township will commit to providing assistance, the township will commit to providing assistance as necessary to any entity, either public or private, that would seek to develop the water and sewer infrastructure necessary to serve the development that would include affordable housing. The assistance shall come in the form of support for any applications made to the Department of Environmental Protection or any other agencies that may have jurisdiction over the provision of water and sewer services and any other reasonable steps necessary to facilitate the provision of such utilities to appropriate areas of the township service, any affordable housing development." So if you could elaborate that on me, you know, for me, and then what will that mean for the residents specifically? What kind of taxes are we going to get hit with because of this? And do, is there going to be any forced tie-ins?
Well, talking about forced tie-ins is getting a little bit beyond my area of expertise. And I would not anticipate that. What that means is, since you don't have any sewer now, if a developer wanted to pay, the developer would have to pay themselves to extend the sewer to either one of these sites. Either coming down from Clayton or coming up from Vineland. The township would commit to supporting that by simply issuing a letter of support to DEP saying, we are okay with extending sewer to this area with no, no financial agreement. It's only a resolution of support and not standing in the way because I, I'm not the engineer here. Ed did come down with affordable housing, angry, and you don't want angry Ed here. So you'll be the one to explain that, but it's the process for getting sewer extended where it currently is. I believe there's a couple of hoops that a developer has to jump through, one being they need the support from municipality as well as support from the state level. State looks at the larger map, the municipality, they'd have to issue a letter of support and possibly do an amendment, depending on where it is, it might require some sort of amendment to the sewer service plan map. And it would be, the township would be doing that, as in saying, we are in support of extending sewer to the site because it's providing affordable housing. That's all the township is committing to do.
Dave, I'll give you a little more personal background on that. Prior to being elected, I was, many years ago, I was asked to sit on the COA committee. So approximately, I can't, not off the top of my head, but about 20 years ago, I got involved with the COA. I went through the builder remedy lawsuit, a whole line yard, which brings us to today. So my, I've asked that question several times, and each time I got the same answer. What does it mean with a township assist? Because I was asked, I was, I'm assuming I was asked the same question you were. Do we write a check to extend the water line? And every attorney and every person always told me, assist means that we won't roadblock it. If there's a permit process, we won't block the permit. We will, the letter he's referring to. So it's more of a government function of not blocking the applicant who's paying to extend that sewer line or that water line, anywhere that water line. So I was very concerned about that word assist. It's been around for 20 years. And I've probably had the same, my thought that you're asking tonight. And my understanding has been, always been, is that assist means just that, not government creating a roadblock for someone else spending their money to extend a line.
All right. That's, the wording is a little misleading.
I, I've asked the question numerous times because I had the same concern.
So when 15 years down the road of this happens and there is an increase in cost, you'll take care of my share?
No, I will not. I'll go back to the attorney that told me that for 20 years and say, why didn't you give me the right information? I'm passing along...
Again, and I'm not the engineer here, although this would likely be better addressed by Ed since he also does the septic reviews for the county. 15, 20 years from now, I think the, my understanding is, again, I'm getting a little bit out of my area of expertise, but the only way anyone can mandate, force you to tie in is if it's demonstrated that there are failing septic systems in the area. So if everyone on your block, if everyone's septic systems are failing at the same time, and there is sewer directly in front of your house, there's, and there's some sort of process for this, I don't know, because I'm never involved in that, but there's a process to go through that where eventually, I suppose, the township couldn't do that, or Gloucester County could do that, depending. But there, there is a process for that as well. They can't just come to you one day and say, hey, you've got to pay us $20,000 to tie into this sewer.
Yeah, I did live in a town where they did a sewer entry. I had a septic system. And what they did to me at that time is they said, okay, we have a functioning septic system. You're fine. But when you sell the house, you have to tie in mandatory, when you sell, you have to tie in to the public source. So when I sold, I, you know, I knew, I knew what was coming out. I knew it was expensive, but I pointed that out to tie in to the public source.
Right. Yeah, so I've, I've read that a lot through a lot of different towns. But the biggest complaint you see is that's what most of them agree upon, but then the taxes go up about two to two and a half percent when the septic goes through and everybody else is paying the share of fare of that because the low income housing can't.
You've got to be serious on the quarter.
Well, I understand that too. Well, we haven't got that far yet. I've got eight more pages to go if I get that far.
You deserve American, you're always people...
Oh, I know. It's, it's killer. I mean, it is. And it's, and these are all things, of course, that have to be factored in before you make your decision. I mean, I'm just giving you different viewpoints. You may have already thought of them, but these are things that are out there and a concern as a resident and taxpayer that we already get hit hard enough at times. And I know, you know, a lot of times, the best is done to keep the costs down. But this could be a substantial change to our financial lifestyle, you know, when this happens. Different costs, of course, that go up, and this is consistent. You can pull this up in every area of the state that already has it. Infrastructure costs go up, emergency services go up, school costs go up drastically. And that all falls, again, on the taxpayer that isn't part of this development area. Because, again, it's pushed away from that because of their position financially. Said, I've been there. I worked my way out of it. You hope everybody does, but not a lot of people do. A lot of people, once they get into that rut, they stay there. And everybody else supports them. And I have no problem helping anybody. But again, this is a cost that will fall upon the other taxpayers. And it can hurt because we have a lot now that are teetering on that edge of considering moving because of where our taxes are at. And they like the rural area, but this could change that as people, if we get that wave that has happened in some towns that start to move out, it could hurt us considerably, you know, as a township. So again, these are things to consider. You've all heard the phrase, living on the other side of tracks, and that you're going to see that happen here. If this goes through the way it is with the overlays, you're going to see designated areas that are going to be known as low income. Those kids in school are going to be ostracized because of that. They're not mixed in between the other residents. They live in specific areas. They're going to be...
These units are going to be mixed. There's going to be a percentage of...
But you look at, you look at our 16,000 residents, it's a small section of our town that this is going. They'll be mixed, but it's a very small area. When you look at our town as a total.
To put it this way, not to completely negate your point, but everything that would be built, most likely the private developer is doing it and not a 100% affordable housing developer that gets the competitive grants, 80% of what they build would be market rate and then 20% would be affordable.
Right.
And the ranges in price on these affordable units, a, just for example, rents on a two bedroom, moderate income unit, which means a household making between 50% and 80% of area median income, which area median income for region five, where we are, for a three person household, moderate income is considered about $76,000 a year. So between $60,000 and $75,000 a year, moderate income of a two bedroom apartment would be about 1,600 to 1,900 a month. And the low incomes would be anywhere from 900 to 1,200 to 1,300 a month. And then there's a few very low income...
Right. That are, that are in the 500 to 900 range. Yep.
And frankly, based on the data we've seen, as well as the prior credits, as well as the rehabs, and all the 96 units that were rehabbed by the county, those are required to have been rehabbed by owner occupied units where those owners are already lower moderate income. So there already is a decent percentage of people in Franklin Township that technically qualify as low and moderate income.
Right. The different breakdown between some can be, you know, over 55 communities, elder communities. The United Way has some fantastic plans. If anybody's looked into that, they do it up north to help offset some of these low income houses. Tom is the gentleman's name. I have his information. I just don't have it with me, and I apologize. I can get that too if you're interested. Basically, you reach out to United Way, they look into it, they find out what they can build, and they can take up usually between 50 and 150 homes or, or areas of credits, you know, to do things. And for example, up in a little bit above Mount Laurel, they did a whole town, whole section, they call it a town. It was 30 to homes just for families with autism, with children with autism, that is specifically built around that without having flashing lights, without having loud sounds. They built it specifically for that. And it's still qualified as, you know, as this portion. So that's...
There are components, and this is in the affordable housing ordinance, is also in the state requirements. Of the 690 credits that are required, a maximum of 25% of that can be towards age restricted housing. So you can't get all 55 and older communities that you're avoiding all the schoolchildren. And there are, what you're talking about is special needs or supportive housing. And you can get credits through that as well. And those are credited by the bedroom. So if, if United Way or Habitat for Manhattan doesn't do special needs, but Bancroft or something like that provides housing for people with autism or, or something like that, if they have a four bedroom home that they're operating, you get four credits for that. However, you can only get a maximum of about half of your credits can come through special needs housing. So the minimum of 50% of it has to be towards families. And that means not age restricted and not special needs.
But that is one alternative you can look into. And it's, from what it sounds like, the towns that have embraced it. Except I can get you the gentleman's information if you're interested. He's, actually has multiple videos on it. He's very reachable, very easy to talk with, and very knowledgeable about helping with this side, you know, with the affordable housing side.
The only thing I would caution about that, I've dealt with the group home providers, as we call them. They are always very willing to come into your town and help you out with your affordable housing obligation. But the, right now, the going rate they're looking for is they want you to help them out at about 40,000 to 60,000 per bedroom. So they would, they would ask you for about $200,000 to build a four bedroom house to get you four credits. And right now, even with, you're allowed to use your affordable housing trust money to spend that, you don't have the money to do that right now. Certainly, they will be allowed anyway. Generally, with a few exceptions, they are permitted by right essentially as a single family home anyway under state law. So they're, they're allowed to come in and build. They just have to self finance.
And then maybe, but that's still one of the areas to look into. The United Way, I didn't see that, you know, from the towns that were actually putting it, were all praising it. So I can't see them putting out a lot of money and praising it also, but it's a possibility.
Well, a lot of towns did claim credits for units that were already there, such as...
And some of it could be rehab and things like that, you know, refurbishing and, you know, I'm sure.
It's a negotiation with those developers, but they are, if they think a town is really desperate to get credits, their, their asking price goes up. They, they understand what is at stake. And I've had quite a few of them ask for $400,000 to $500,000 to build one house. And they want the town to build everything for them. And only a couple of towns have actually gone that route.
And the other concern I have, and again, like I said, this is not being derogatory, but the housing market in a surrounding area next to low income, unfortunately, property values do go down. It's statistically proven when you go to sell. If you look at the overlay zone that's in Malaga, that's the largest zone that we have that runs from, you know, basically from behind Heritage Hills all the way over to right in front of us and all the way down to Rub Road. All those houses around there can have that effect. You know, they can have that detriment or loss of value when it comes time to sell or anything you do down the road. It's, it's a good possibility it could occur. And that's something that's a big concern because it's a huge area on the map. Being as there is a possibility or a chance to renegotiate that, I'd love to see that area broke down to a smaller area. And maybe some of that moved to another area, at least just because, like I said, we're getting hammered in Malaga. It's huge. And I'm not trying to push it in any results deliberately in Franklin. I'm not picking a target. I'm just saying it'd be nice to see that split up a little bit instead of picking one area.
I know. I realized there was a couple more in Malaga, but the thing is, I think, 13 or 14 Franklin's there.
Well, there, there, they are, but they're all in little tiny parcels. Malaga's a huge area. It covers the largest square footage on the ground. It's, it's massive. You look at the overlays, it's, it's not even close anywhere else. You add all the other areas up, they still don't equal what's in that one area. You add all the other areas up, they still don't equal what's in that one area, and Malaga.
There's three maps in the plan in the appendices, one is the overall of the township, and then there's one called the north and the south. The south is essentially the area around Malaga, heading between Malaga and New York, and then the north is closer to Clayton, and there's, within each, there's three or four kind of chunks of multiple parcels. And one of the things that they were looking for is some sort of larger tracts of land that are currently undeveloped. That's what makes it more attractive to a developer. We could have put an overlay on, you know, the actual Malaga itself of all those single-family homes there, and technically speaking, there would be the same development potential, but then you'd have to buy out, you know, 100 different property owners and tear down 100 different homes in order to build, whereas some of these-
Well, the other part of that, Chris, if I, if I heard you correctly earlier, is the only place you've included is in DPA area number two. So what percentage, or how much of the, I guess the question would be, how much of the town is in DPA area two that's not in this plan? I, I would suspect because of the ability to get water and sewer, which is why they're at the north and the south ends here, the rest of the town wouldn't qualify because they're in areas three, four, and five.
What's known as planning area one and two, and I don't think you have any planning area one, but planning area two basically extends down the northern ends of Delsey Drive and Frye's Mill Road.
Because of Clayton.
Because of Clayton, and then basically Malaga Village and the areas right on the Vinland border, some of that is-
Because of Vinland border. So just, and obviously, I'm from Starkville, so I, I don't know what DPA area I'm in, but I, I know, you know, Monroe's extension comes nowhere near the Franklin border out there, so, you know, that area is, I'm assuming at three, four, or five. So to look at all the lots, I, I think the real question is, is that how much more of the town is in area two that isn't in this plan?
Not much.
Because if it wasn't in area one or two, it's not going to be accepted by the court or allowed by DPA.
The only other areas we could really consider would be the areas immediately around these properties.
Right.
Hypothetically, we could shift it from, I'm just, just looking at the map here of the one near Malaga, where we got Block 5504, which is-
You want a better map than that?
Is that the tax on your property? Okay, so that's, 5101, so that's, that's here, this is the, the largest tract near, near Malaga, just south of West Boulevard and next to Route 47. Yeah, there, there's, we could shift things maybe a little bit north and south, closer to 5504, there, there's not really-
We can move it a lot one way or the other in that general vicinity of town.
In that general vicinity.
But we can't put it out in Piney Hollow or out in Jammer because DPA will never, and we'd never get accepted because of the DPA areas that those sections of the township possess. So really, we're isolated to the areas that DEP's, the courts are going to look at what DPA area is in disagreement.
Now, if, if somebody wanted to build their own, for example, sewage treatment plan, I look at Pitts Grove, they've got multiple areas that have their own, you know, for different mobile home parks and things like that, is that something that would be suitable to still qualify?
Yes.
All right, so then they don't have to be near one of these areas, is what I'm saying. They can be done, it just depends on how aggressive or how protective you want to get of certain areas.
I just have to say, I, I don't know the DPA regulations on, I think they're called small package treatment plans, is what it is.
Right.
If you've got, you know, 20 or 30 mobile homes all using the same septic field, I don't know what DPA regulations are on those right now, that's, that's always a, a possibility.
Okay, yeah, just a little further possibilities.
Although I'm not sure that an affordable housing developer who wants to build, say, 80 market rate units and 20 affordable units is-
No, I'm not saying it can, I'm just saying there's a possibility.
There, there are, there are different types of septic systems, and not every home, obviously, in Franklin, you don't have sewer here, but you've got people here several without a septic system. So yes, if anybody wants to build a, a bigger community and can work it out with DPA and the county in terms of how they get that septic system approved, then they, they could build some affordable housing that way.
All right, that's, well, may I ask him?
Thank you, dear.
We've got your room, but any more, you can get your- We've got the tax after you.
Yeah, right, thanks, yep.
Hi, my name is Cindy Merks, 330 Oak Ave., Malaga.
Mark, sir.
Merks, it's spelled M-E-R-C-K-X.
And you're at this again?
330 Oak Ave., Malaga.
Raise your right hand for me.
Sure.
Do you swear the testimony to the scene, or do you swear the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thanks very much, Chris.
I have a couple of questions, so, all right, can they, can a developer, if he doesn't want to use sewer, like the sewer lines, could he also continue his project with a package treatment system?
I believe so, yes, I think that was the last question.
So he can, he can use that, that option?
Probably, yeah. I, I don't, I can't think of any, any reason why they wouldn't be allowed to. They have to, they have to treat their, their wastewater somehow.
Which, in Malaga-
Packaged treatment plant, then, then, yes, that would be allowed.
Okay. Also, Joe, you had mentioned about Monroe Township, and they have a lot more development there, as you know, because you guys cover for them a lot. And the, over there near Tuckahoe, as well as on Frye's Mill, where the neighborhood of Frye's Mill is, and the other side is there, all those new ones that are coming, and that, that line's being extended quite a bit, that sewer line, so it is probably more reachable now than it was to Franklin's borders. So I don't know whether they're just considering Clayton. I know Clayton also, they have New Jersey American Water as well, that they, they just can't make it on their own, and they just took out a legal notice that they have to extend more, they have to, they have more redevelopment coming in there as far as more density and some more apartments, so they had to increase theirs as well.
You're absolutely correct, and what I've been told in the past, and this is unofficial, but it's not coming from, but the, their sewer line cannot, because they're trying to improve the authority sewer line that they're connected to, will, because of the capacity of that line, will not allow it to extend into Franklin. Is that, that's the end of the line, and they're not taking on, because we dealt with this in the years past on extending sewer line.
Right.
And the improvement of, and that, that's where that deep were the second improvement party number two with the coming out of the quarter and all that, that line. The original line coming through Washington and Monroe will never be extended into Franklin because they're maxed out on that line and they don't want to take Franklin in.
Okay.
That's what I've been told several times, and-
Right.
Same thing with the, the water, the, you know, obviously, they, they're maxed out on their, on their water as well. So yes, the line is there, but I've been told that they would not ever extend it into Franklin.
However, if you take a look at our tax, you can see right on Broad Street, where Frye's Mill Road, and we had a nice attorney who was looking at that property for a while at the northern end. That, that person is from Florida and is already a developer, so they could extend that very easily to the northern-
As we talked about before, the DPA will only allow sewer extensions in planning area one and planning area two.
So is Broad Street planning area, what is that?
Broad Street, off of, off of that, I'm not sure, but the farther northernmost portions of the township where you border Monroe Township.
Right.
I don't think any of that is in planning area one or planning area two. Like Williamstown in Monroe is planning area two and maybe a little bit planning area one, but then the, there's several miles in between Williamstown where it's planning area two and then getting back into Franklin where it's planning area two. If you look at the map of the overall of the township, the portions of the town that are planning area two are sort of the wedge in between these wetland areas which surround the streams, which is, I forget the name of it.
Scotland Run.
Scotland Run. Scotland Run and the areas a little bit west of Scotland Run are, are in the planning area two. That's, that's where sewer would be acceptable. Another important, to Chairman Petch's point, township engineer, back, back when Jim McCouncy was still with us before he left to go to Camden County, part of what the Corvessor asked us to do, and we did, was to reach out to the utility authorities in Clayton, in Vuna, in Vinland, and, and in Monroe, and see what their capacity is.
Right.
Part of what we were, this process of negotiations was trying to seek a durational adjustment, which is basically saying, we don't have infrastructure capacity for this development right now, so we're going to delay our obligations to the future until when we do. And I'm still not sure of the legal process behind it, because it doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. We were granted a durational adjustment, but not granted a durational adjustment, so that's why it says in the plan, we're granted a partial durational adjustment, where the court recognized we don't have infrastructure capacity because there is no water and sewer, but we can't say when it's going to be here, so there's no actual duration vote. All of this obligation is essentially deferred until somebody brings in water and sewer. So the issue is not only extending a line from Clayton or Vinland or from Monroe, but also essentially that developer probably have to pay to upgrade the capacity at the treatment plants in those towns as well, which is another added cost on top of that. They are largely close to or at capacity, and those, for those utilities, as well as they have their own affordable housing obligations, that they want to make sure they retain some capacity for development, so they'll have to go through in their towns too.
Ralph, I know you're on agriculture. Did, was there any, anybody who has those properties in Malaga? They used to be the DiMatteo Farm and the farm right behind that, because that's all in that area that Mr. Marshall brought up. Is, was, is there any interest that they may want to preserve it?
I don't believe there's no highway commercial there, there's only Malaga Villages and Malaga Settlement is currently the law, which this new overlay should the town adopt. I've spoken to several of the farmers in those properties, and they own the land, that's why I asked them in the domain, I asked actually on their behalf.
I figured you'd probably, okay, all right.
And I said, I don't leave, but I'll ask the question this evening.
Okay.
They don't intend on selling today.
Okay. That's why I was curious, when you went there, maybe they were interested in preserving farms?
In fact, one of those properties that's on this list, it's 5101, one of them asked me to preserve their farm-
Okay.
-in the last two weeks.
Okay.
Which is contrary to this, which they are capable of doing.
Right. Okay, that's good to hear, maybe that, that would happen. The last thing was, then, a couple of years ago, Pegasus had sued our town because of, you know, they needed sewage. And at that point, we were told that we had to provide at some point. Does that, did that have any influence on any of this or no? To, to move more into Malaga because of the business?
I'm not familiar with that particular lawsuit, so I, I don't know what the outcome of that was.
It was left on our shoulders, that's why when people ask the question, how much was, is, you know, are we going to be responsible for it? Because we, it was in the Cox manual that they use for the zoning board, I remember reading it years ago, probably around, I can't remember. You know what I mean, it's the bible of the land juice, yes. And that, it was, it did make it, that's the only reason why I knew, because we don't make too many, you know, headlines, and we made that one. So I don't know if that had any influence on their decision when they made their decision.
I, I-
Homework for you, right? It was there, yeah.
I just have that case, I said, Pegasus sounds familiar, but also there's a lot of things in Pegasus, so there's-
No, Pegasus is, is a restaurant in Malaga, and they did not have, they had bought some property, and they wanted to put a sewer system there, and they were denied, so they took it to court. Joe Hoffman represented them. And the township was told that they had to, within a certain amount of time, get them sewer. So they started to look for packaged systems. So I've been doing this for 20 years, so I mean, it's kind of-
Not knowing the specifics of that case, I would have to assume it's similar to what this says in terms of supporting somebody.
Okay.
It wouldn't be the township was obligated to pay for them to have sewer extended to their property, but the township would agree not to roadblock any, any permit applications with DPA or with Gloucester County.
Okay.
That, that's my assumption, I don't know, I'd have to look on that case.
But none of that, but, so the business district wasn't a part of this, and they're thinking about things?
Not necessarily, no. This was purely identifying land where it would be potentially-
I understand, it's right on the bus route and everything else, sure.
... and tracking to a developer so that-
For senior citizens, it's perfect. I mean, one of the farms is absolutely perfect for seniors, I mean, because they could walk to their CVS, they could have everything right there and take their little scooters if they wanted to. And, and it would be, I'm not disagreeing with one of them, but it's a matter of, there's also businesses there who have sued us in the past because they didn't get what they wanted and what it's costing them to pump their septics each week. So that's kind of why I wasn't sure if that was any influence as to why Malaga got stuck with so much.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I might, might be wrong.
Well, who knows, we weren't there, so, but thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Steve Rickerhauser, 123 Defiance Road, Rickerhauser spelled R-I-C-K-E-R-S-H-A-U-S-E-R. 123, what is it, sir? Defiance. For the testimony to you this evening, do you swear the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? I do. Thanks, sir. Just a couple of questions. It says that, in an essence, 20% of the building lots could be low-income, but it also doesn't tell you that it all could be high-density low-income.
Well, the maximum density, that's what the overlay zone would permit, up to 14 units an acre.
Okay.
Which is probably four or five times bigger than anything else that's currently left.
And what is the total on that big lot, the Malaga lot, would that be for density then? How many do you think it would be there?
Let's see, we're talking about this 5101 area?
Mr. Rickerhauser, on page 34, 5101, acceptable lot, 322 units, it says.
322 units?
Yes.
So that would be the maximum on the 5101 lot, and that would be the end of that?
It would be 322 affordably. It's 100, about 115 acres total or net acres, I think, there might be a little bit of wetland.
Well, when I asked you for high-density, that could be more than 322. Affordable units, you're telling me how many affordable units could be in that acre?
1612 would be the total.
See, all right, so there'll be more units if we wanted to, if you're doing a 20% calculation.
Yeah, it'd be 1600 total and 320.
But they don't have to do the 20% calculation, you can do a total of low-income for the whole project, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you re-
They can do the whole project in low-income and not be 20% of a total project.
That's possible.
That's right, so you could have 1,600 units of low-income housing. Okay? The 20%, I mean, and I'm, I'm in the building business, let's put it that way. I've seen projects that are done, row homes that are done, where you have the 20% mixed in with the, the high-income individuals, and they get along fine. But if you're going to have 1,600 possible units, we call that a project, okay? And that's a big infrastructure to have in this township, let alone we already have problems with traffic and stuff like that as we do it along now. So we're talking 1,600 people with cars, okay? We're talking maybe multiple-family dwellings where you're going to have one or two families in each dwelling, all right? I'm just asking these questions because when it comes to the planning board, when you accept 1,600 homes in an apartment complex style, that's what you're going to get, okay? If you do it as the 20% rule of low-income housing, along with senior citizen housing, then it works out a lot better. So the plan has to be adopted in a place that it works like that, because if you get it away from the apartment complex, it's a lot better for the township, looks a lot nicer.
Put it this way, the ordinance requirement is affordable housing is permitted at a density up to 14 units an acre with a minimum set aside of 20%. In order to get 1600 units of all affordable housing there, a developer would have to have zero market rate housing. And the affordable housing doesn't really pay for itself.
But it doesn't stop from doing 800 units. Doesn't stop...
Somebody would have to get a government grant for all 1600 units there, and typically the 100% affordable projects, they get funded through low-income housing tax credits. I've never seen a development bigger than 120.
But it's not unheard of, though. It's not unheard of. It's possible.
1600, I'd...
Not 1600. Let's do 500. 600.
That's a lot bigger than anything I've seen.
Right. But it's not impossible. It can be done. That's all right. I just want to put it out there so they understand what can happen when they do the planning and the zoning for this, individuals. Thank you, sir. That's it.
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. Petz, members of the planning board. Howie Atkinson, 1112 Friesmell Road, Franklinville, New Jersey. Previous member of the township committee, zoning board, planning board, and I could be sworn in.
Is that ATK INSOM?
ATK INSOM.
Swear a testimony of the evening, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thanks, go ahead.
Just a quick question. The overlay zones, through a rough calculation of looking at the overlay zone, looks to be approximately about 500 acres total. And in the event that we, I guess, meet our obligation, would any of those overlayed zones be able to be lifted once we met our obligation? Or would they always be hanging out there?
Put it this way, yes. If enough affordable housing is built to where you meet that 690 number, including the existing credits you got, then the township could go in and say, "Okay, we're removing the rest of the overlay zone, we've met our obligation."
Very good. That's something that I just would, you want to be sure that we would be looking at or being aware of as the process was unwinding. And just a follow-up on Mr. Rickerhauser's point. Is there any way, when we're adopting the ordinances, that any of the ordinances could be tweaked to ensure that we get the balance of the correct development of the market rate units and the affordable units, to ensure that we don't wind up with more affordable units on a lot by some manipulation?
Now, this has been settled, I mean, this settlement agreement was signed back in May, June of 2022, and that settlement agreement details these specific properties and this specific process.
And the ordinances are already outlined in the settlement?
The draft ordinances are included and appended to that settlement agreement. All I can say there, if you wanted to put a cap on the affordable housing set aside of 20%, rather than a minimum, then it's just an absolute 20%. I don't know that the courts would necessarily have a huge problem with that, but the controlling factor there is the market. No developer wants to build more affordable housing than they're required to unless they are a nonprofit 100% affordable housing developer. The only developers I've ever seen do 25% or 30% are in towns where they are selling market rate units for $2 million, and therefore that cost is covering the set aside. Everything else, the developers, they want to build market rate units, that's how they make their money. They're typically either raking you in or losing money on these affordable units. So the free-market controls over developer wants to make money, and they're not going to build things as a charity case unless they absolutely have to.
Sure.
Really controlling mechanism.
I understand, but I just, just from my experience over the years and being involved in the builder's remedy suit over the years, and being involved in some of these cases, things come sometimes twist and turn in other ways that aren't always imaginable. But I mean, if we're already done with the process, it's just something that I would, you know, hope that our planning board members and our governing body members would be aware of, in the event that something would have to be changed or done to ensure that we're looking at that. Again, just from my experience over the years, seeing how things have, you know, unwound. But just a quick comment. It is after all the years of the builder's remedy suit and the COA, and I don't always agree with big government and the Mount Laurel decision going back many, many years. It is good to see some clarity finally into how this is being handled, so the municipalities have some idea of how we're moving forward with it, because it's been quite a mess. And, you know, but we're finally wrapping it up, I hope, I hope. But thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, gentlemen. I would like to recognize how, when I talked about 20 years of going through this, Mr. Atkinson was right there alongside of us. He was a player back then, trying to find a way to resolve our obligations. Anyone else?
Sorry, I'll make this as quick as I can. Jason Brandt, 688 Rosemont Avenue, Newfield, New Jersey. I swear all that stuff you said.
B-R-A-N-D-T?
DT.
You swear a testimony of the evening, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. Thank you. Regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, could you repeat the funding mechanism for that again?
Yeah, it's a non-residential development fee, and it's required by the state. You're supposed to be collecting 2.5% of the equalized assessed value of any new non-residential construction or a substantial building addition to a non-residential property.
So there'll be no fees associated with any residential development?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. There is a statewide, there is a residential development fee. State law says that's optional to collect. Off the top of my head, I don't recall if the township is going to be collecting that or not, and that's for new construction. It's 1.5% of equalized assessed value. But off the top of my head, I'm not sure if the township intends to collect that.
Anybody know if the township's collecting that?
Probably in the development.
You are? Okay. Now, is there a minimum that has to go into that fund on a yearly basis?
No, it's just whatever new development you get, they contribute. If you don't get, if no one builds anything in Franklin, then no money goes into the fund.
Because that's contrary to what I read. It said that if the minimum wasn't made, that the taxpayers would pick up the balance?
Hey, I think what you're referring is a...
If there was a shortfall within the fund?
If there's a shortfall, that's to fund any of the mechanisms where you have to spend money. And right now, the discussions I've had is your spending plan is that you will not have to spend any money other than what's already in your trust fund, because you do not have a rehabilitation obligation, which is where usually a lot of the money comes from that you would have to spend, because the county has already satisfied that for you. There's an affordability assistance requirement, which is 30% of the trust fund, and that's 30% of whatever monies you collect. There is nothing out there right now that is obligating the town to spend any money. However, you currently have, I think it's about $130,000 in your trust fund as of a few months ago. And so eventually, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to spend that. There's a number of potential mechanisms there. It could be, typically, it's when someone is buying a new affordable home that there's down payment assistance, but you have to have somebody building an affordable home in order to then assist that. Or there's giving money to a group home for them to expand, or there is emergency rental assistance. There's a number of mechanisms there. We're kind of leaving that up to figuring out what that's going to be in the next few years, because you don't have any affordable housing coming yet. There's no proposal on the table. There's no developer who has said, "I'm going to build X amount of units right here," that there's any impetus at this time to put anything forward. The intent to bond for a shortfall is standard language that fair share and the courts require, that really applies to towns that have a rehab obligation of, say, 100 units, and they've only satisfied 10. And you have to spend a minimum of $10,000 for rehab, therefore they have a $900,000 obligation, which they say they're going to fund through their Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and they may or may not get the money to do that.
So in Franklin Township, the taxpayers are never going to have to put a dime into the Affordable Trust, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
That seems very unlikely. There's no projects that you're obligated to fund in this plan, therefore there's really nothing that you would have...
I think you pretty much answered my last question, which is, what are the funds going to be utilized for? But you're saying you have no idea what they're going to be utilized for at this time?
I have an idea. There's a limit of what it has to be used for, and it's, there's about maybe eight to 10 things that the state and the courts have said count as acceptable funding of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that is giving money to a developer to have them build housing. Whether that's a group home provider, you can use your trust fund to give them money to say, "Hey, build two extra bedrooms. Here's, you know, $50,000, and we'll get extra credits." You can use it to rehabilitate existing homes, which is pretty expensive. The requirement is that you spend a minimum of $10,000 for every rehabilitated unit, plus those administrative costs. You can spend a maximum of 20% of your Affordable Housing Trust Fund on paying your professionals. 30% has to go to affordability assistance, which is things like rental assistance, down payment assistance, closing cost assistance. Or another thing that some towns have done is if a new neighborhood is built, say, Dr. Horton comes in and builds a 100-unit townhouse community with 20 of them being affordable. The town can use Affordable Housing Trust Fund money to pay once a year or a one-time payment of HOA fees for the new townhouse homeowners that are the affordable units. Things like that can be, the money can go towards that. But it's only as you have the money. So let's say there is a program that we're going to give $1,000 to each affordable homeowner in the townhouse community towards their HOA fees. You're not obligated to then continue paying their fees in perpetuity. It's as you have money in the trust fund, you can use it for that. And then when the trust fund runs dry, then you're done.
Okay. So in other words, we have no spending plan now? That is something that'll come in the future, when we have something to spend it all?
There's a draft spending plan in here that outlines those sorts of things, but it is going to be amended before the governing body adopts it. I literally had conversations with the court master and the Fair Share Housing Center about it this morning, and their opinion was that since we have no affordable housing, and we have, relative to some other towns, since we have only a $100,000 or so, and we're only projected within the next two years to probably have somewhere in the range of 250,000 to 350,000 total in the trust fund, based on past development patterns and what they would have had to pay into the fund, the development fees. Since that's relatively low compared to some other towns, bigger suburbs, they get a lot of development that have anywhere from $10 to $20 million in their trust fund. The courts are really, you've got to figure out how you're going to spend that. Right now, we're kind of punting on the issue of exactly what we're going to do with it, because, like I said, usually the affordability assistance and the trust fund money goes towards helping people buy affordable homes, and right now you do not have any deed restricted affordable homes to help them buy.
Got you. Is the trust fund currently overspent on administrative fees? Is that something I read in the...
It very well could be.
Is one of the opportunities to spend that money to actually purchase, like, a deed restriction from a market rate property?
That's always possible. That's a pretty expensive proposition.
That's one of the 10 items.
Market-to-affordable program, and you can use Affordable Housing Trust Fund money to do that. That gets pretty expensive. You have to buy a house that's market rate and then deed restricted, and then you sell it at the deed restricted rate. And based on what housing prices are today, that's a...
You wouldn't be able to get many units based on what you got in your fund?
I think, just as an example, Mount Laurel has been trying to do that.
Yeah, a third of a unit, yeah.
Mount Laurel has been trying to do that, because they had, in their settlement agreement, they agreed to try to do that for 100 houses. They made that agreement when housing prices were a lot lower. It's costing them right now somewhere in the range of like $90,000 to $120,000 per unit to buy down, to buy a house and then write it down to the affordable price. They're spending $350,000 to buy a home, and then they're reselling it for like $220,000.
Got you.
So they have to eat that cost.
Thank you. Someone left their glasses up here? I don't know.
I'll get them.
Don't be a burden. I was going to put them on, so I look a little smarter.
We could all hope.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing none, hearing none. Entertained motion to close the public portion. Motion moved in, all favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Matt, I would like to...
On Steve's comment about maximum build-out potential of low-income units, where Chris says it's a 20% minimum. So I was reading 01423, the ordinance that covers it. It's section three, number two, small letter A, and I'll read it. "The 20% mandatory affordable housing onsite set aside requirement shall apply to any residential development, including the residential portion of a mischievous project of five units or more." So that's where Steve is coming in, that there's a 20% minimum, but he's saying there could be a maximum. You're saying financially, there won't be unless it's backed by grants. Does this board have the authority to cap that 20% without going back to the current system?
I don't think so. You can make that as a record, like, as Matt said, what you're doing for the ordinance is, you are first finding them, whether or not they're consistent or not with the master plan. And these are specifically appendices of the master plan, so it would be virtually possible for you to say it's not consistent with the master plan, so you need to adopt it. You're also allowed to make whatever comments you see are necessary. If you wanted to say you wanted to cap it at 20%, there's a couple of...
25.
Or 25. There's a couple of issues there. One, they'll probably have to go back to, the court would have to approve that, which would be a three- to six-month process. We'd have to tell Fair Share Housing Center and the court master and the court that, "Hey, the town wants to adopt this, but instead of just a 20% minimum, they also want to have a 25% maximum." The court may or may not be okay with that. I don't know. I don't want to speak for them. My guess is they were probably saying we'd rather not see that. Matt's saying they definitely would say that.
I mean, this thing's been going over with a fine toothed comb. The cases are unusual in that not only do you have the oversight of the judge, but you've got the Fair Share Housing Corporation that's been tapped as kind of an overseer of this process throughout the state, in addition to having a special master. And this went through several layers of those approvals and negotiations. The settlement agreement was signed in June 2022, which had a couple of the ordinance dependent to it. August of that year, the court holds what they call a fairness hearing. And your attorney actually went through the process of publishing notice of this fairness hearing, going to be conducted on August 12th before the court. And here's how you can participate in that hearing by Zoom. Here's how you can submit objections to this board. That hearing is conducted. After that hearing, written notice again goes out to all these particular property owners that are in this designated overlay zone. Written notice went out to each property owner saying, "This is what happened at the fairness hearing. You have 45 days to file any written objections with the court." So it's gone through an exhaustive process to get it to this one-yard line here.
To summarize, when we're given a package, you really can't tweak it with a lot of obstacles.
To some degree, yes. The 20% minimum would be a pretty significant obstacle. It would require a lot of discussion back and forth, and that would be, I have never seen outside of the 100% affordable developers who get funded entirely through low-income housing tax credits, which is a grant, a very competitive grant they have to apply for. No developer has done any more affordable housing than the minimum required, because, like I said, they want market rate units, that's how they make their money. But if this was a 10% set aside, we would have to do twice as much land, and then the developers would do a 10% set aside. Even the ones that sue and go tell the court that they're doing such a wonderful thing by providing affordable housing are doing the absolute minimum that the law requires them to do.
Thank you. All right, Matt, back to you. Anybody else have a question? Matt, back to you. A motion would be to approve plan, deny the plan, deny a plan, or say silently. And what about the ordinances? Do we recognize the ordinances, or are we only recognizing the plan? And should they be, recognizing the ordinances, should they be separate?
The ordinances should be considered separately. What I'd like to do is conduct a vote with respect to the plan, and then go down the line with those ordinance amendments. Because you are free to make whatever recommendations you like, to the extent you have any, and if like Memorial, it applies to the specific, the particular order.
Okay. Just how I entertain a motion on the affordable housing plan, and it will be the ordinances there. Motion to move forward with the plan in a second. I've got a motion in a second. Vol. 4 vote, please.
Okay. Mr. Constantine?
Oh.
Mr. Malady?
Yeah.
Mr. Sweet?
Yeah.
Mayor Bruno?
Committee's in.
Yeah, I would abstain.
Mr. Chivaglun?
Yes.
Chairman Petz?
Yes. Motion carries by a vote 4 to 1. Okay, the next one, I'll entertain a motion or ordinance 13-23, recognizing and accepting the ordinance as written. I have a motion. You have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Vol. 4 vote, please.
Mr. Constantine?
I've already voted no to the main plan. Should I abstain on the ordinances?
No.
No.
And this motion, I'm sorry, just to be clear, this motion is to recommend that the governing body adopt the ordinance without any...
Without any changes. And then would be, that's going to carry through for all four ordinances, that we're recommending that, we're voting on the one, but it would carry through all the way through, recommending that there's no change to the ordinance. That is the motion. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Are you abstaining?
I have to, no, you abstain.
Mr. Chivaglun?
Yes.
And Chairman Petz?
Yes. Motion carries 4 to 1. The next one would be ordinance 13-23.
We're on 14.
14.
I voted no.
Yes. You abstain. So a vote is 411. Four yes, four yes, one no, one abstention.
Correct.
All right. Ordinance 14-23. Is there a motion to on that one?
No, we did 13-23. 14-23 establishes the overlay zone, details those properties.
You have a second? I'll second it. Go, go ahead. All you, go ahead. All right, second.
Okay. Mr. Constantine?
No.
Mr. Malady?
Yeah.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Thank you.
Mr. Chivaglun?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Petz?
Yes. Same vote, 411. Okay, now we're going to go to ordinance 15-23. Is there a motion for that one?
Make a motion for 0-15-23.
Second?
Second.
Moving second. Vol. 4 vote, please.
Mr. Constantine?
No.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Thank you.
Mr. Trevaglou?
Yes.
And Chairman Petz?
Yes. 4-1-1. And the last ordinance is O-16-23. Motion, please.
Motion for O-16-23.
Move in second and ballot, please.
Mr. Constantine?
No.
Mr. Malady?
Yeah.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Thank you.
Mr. Trevaglou?
Yes.
And Chairman Petz?
Yes. 4-1-1.
One last ordinance, and that's a recommendation concerning that overlay map. It all goes hand in hand, it's a technicality, but the recommendation should be made to the governing body.
Who put the overlay?
The overlay, the map itself. Whenever you're amending the official map of the municipality, you have to go through the same process.
Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to...
Recommend?
Recommend the overlay map. I got a motion, a second?
Second.
Move in second and ballot, please.
Mr. Constantine?
No.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Thank you.
Mr. Trevaglou?
Yes.
And Chairman Petz?
Yes. Make a motion to approve. Matt, anything else on this corporate plan that we should touch on?
I did.
Yeah, good? Okay. All right, thank you. And Chris, Matt, very nice, very informative explanation. It's been a long process to get this...
He did all the heavy lifting, but that didn't happen. It's been a decade-long process.
Okay. The next piece of agenda here is the general public portion. Before I entertain a motion to go into the next general, into the general public portion, I have a couple, there's a couple comments that I would like to make with regards to the last meeting and the history behind the public portion. First of all, this board is not required to have a general public portion. It was my, several years back, it was my idea. When the people had questions about the master plan or planning in general and was looking for information and they weren't able to ask the question during the application process, I came up with the idea of adding a public portion to it. Now, this comment has nothing to do with an application. When there's an application, a piece of that is the public portion, and that is required by law and will all, should and would always be there. The idea of the public portion, like I say, I take ownership to it because I thought it was the right thing to do. Transparency, everybody wants to use the word transparency. There's nothing to hide, and people never had, people didn't have an opportunity to ask a question. The zoning board does not have a public portion, historical, environmental, you can look at all your appointed committees. The requirement in the statute for a public portion applies to elected officials, township committee, school boards, even the fire districts. It does not apply to appointed boards other than our application and the public portion. When speakers step up and make accusations directed at the chair, and if the accusations made at the chair, it applies to everyone up here of collusion, of playing against the residents, of the lack of transparency when the public portion itself was, the objective was to have transparency. Is everyone getting money in their pocket? So much is being hiding, so much hiding is going on, covering up for other people. To my board, I would make the recommendation that we do away with the general public session. Think about it for a month. We'll have Mike here at the next meeting. And like I say, my recommendation, because it changed from trying to help residents to a sounding board for people with agendas. And with that said, I'll entertain a motion to open this public portion. Thank you. Make a motion to open it.
Second.
Move in second. We're in public portions. Anyone who wishes to speak on planning board matters?
Dave Marshall, 67 New Road. Of course, most of those comments were directed at me and taken a little out of context. Again, and that's one of the things I'm going to talk about tonight. I did not accuse anybody of anything. I did not accuse anybody of anything. You can watch the...
I did watch it today.
Right.
That's exactly what was said.
I said, "I don't know if that is happening." I did not accuse anybody of that.
All right. Dave, your question regarding the planning board this evening, because that's all I'm going to entertain.
All right.
I'm not going to entertain going back and forth about people's opinions of whether is everyone getting money in their pocket. I've spent 54 years volunteering in this township. I've done, literally, I've done township committee, I've done fire department, I've done fire districts, I've done economic development. There are numerous, numerous things. I volunteered for over 54 years and never took a penny. I took that comment personally. I watched it today, and it's exactly what you said to me.
Oh, I didn't, but...
Well, yes, you did.
We can beg to differ, we can watch it together. I'll come over to your house, and we'll see if I have some popcorn and watch it.
There's no need for us to watch it together. It's what you said.
But along that line, there was a situation brought up about using the minutes or the minutes as opposed to using the videotape. There's a term that's called confirmation bias, and I'm going to read you the definition of that. "This by definition is a tendency to search for, interpret, favor, and recall information in a way that confirms or supports one's prior beliefs or values. People display this bias when they select information that supports their views, ignoring contrary information, or when they interpret ambiguous evidence to support their existing attitudes." The reason I'm bringing that up is there are many, many, many towns that use the video as their accurate minutes. There was a court case that was brought up by our, and this is no slander at all towards you as a, you know, an attorney. I apologize if it comes across that way.
Heard it all.
There was a court case brought up that was valid, that is accurate. That was one of the few, and I found three more in the entire state that go against using videotapes for minutes. I found 423 that state you can use the recordings as your accurate minutes. So again, that was one piece that was chosen for that personal agenda. And talking about agendas, I have none. I'm not running for office, I've never said I was running for office.